Thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good thing you said that, Mike. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone here for two-minute public input? All right, consent agenda, or review and approve council agenda.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Ken, second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items, item A. Approve five-three twenty-one city council meeting minutes. Item B, approve five-seventeen twenty-one city council meeting minutes. Item C, approve five-twenty-five twenty-one city council special meeting minutes. Item D, approve appointing public works seasonal positions. Item F, approve full off-sale liquor license for El Patron Liquor LLC. And item F, approve off-sale brewery license, on-sale taproom, and Sunday liquor license for Backshed Brewery.
I'd like to pull D.
I would also like to pull the five-twenty-five council for reason of the abstention.
C. All right, somebody want to move to approve A, B, E, F, D, E, oh, A, B, A, B, E, and F?
Yeah, I'll move.
I'll second. Mike, second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Frank, item C?
Yeah, I just, I weren't, no.
Somebody want to move to approve item C?
I'll move, approve item C, I'll second.
Further discussion. Favorit?
Aye.
Opposed, and an abstention.
Yes.
Item D, Mike.
Um, last meeting, I believe, we had five people come up under this public works seasonal positions. We have another five this week, and we already have hired, I believe, four earlier several months ago to start the season. In our, uh, budget for this year, we only have positions up to ten. Um, I don't know where we're getting extra money for all these. Um, last time, I told to keep my nose on my own face, and didn't appreciate that. So, um, I don't believe we can, uh, pass this number of people. The fact that it would be over the number.
Are these just lawn and maintenance mowing and that kind of stuff? Or does this also include assistance out at the AMP when we get it open?
Some of them were for the AMP also. Some were for the AMP.
I think these three are actually the gatekeepers.
I can't hear.
I think these three are the gatekeepers, so they're for the AMP.
I thought. I can't, well, this is what's getting me, and I may, I may get a little mad. Is this AMP stuff is killing us. It's not only killing us, it's killing the supervisors of these departments. Um, we're taking advantage of this AMP this year. If they want to have these different employees for different jobs, they should be coming back to us or whomever with the requests for these people to work on these specific jobs. It's your public sea, uh, public works seasonal positions, which should be worked for the position that Bill says he doesn't have enough people to work for. So I, I, I would encourage you not to, right at this point, approve these until we find out what the heck is going on. Um, we spent a lot of money, and it doesn't seem like we're getting a nickel for anything we spent on some other things here, so.
I, I recall during the budget, it was ten to fifteen seasonal, because even last year,
It was ten.
I thought we were trying to hire ten.
I talked to Keith about it, it was ten. It was ten.
Last year, we couldn't even get ten, so that.
Right, that was the big concern is.
And I don't know how, any of these have,
No help.
I don't know if any of them have quit or anything, or we, or, you know, I don't know that. Uh, now, what's your wishes? We can, we can either vote, vote for them, or we can put them on next council meeting, which is in two weeks.
I, I wasn't here at the last council meeting, so I don't know how many you put on at that time. I read the,
We put them all on.
The packet, so I think it was three or four.
Yeah, and some of them were for the AMP, I know that there too.
Yeah, it was eight prior to that, wasn't it? Wasn't it eight prior to that?
I don't remember the total number anymore, but.
I, I guess what I'd like to do is make a motion that we table this the next time, so we can get this decided exactly how many people are working where.
Yeah, I'll second that.
My fear is they won't be here by their next council meeting.
Well, then it should have been done properly the first time.
Say that, but when you don't get anybody, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's the problem. And that, it's the same as the fire department, fire department, we, we say we're fully staffed at thirty, but I'll always say, I'll take whoever applies. If they meet the minimum qualifications, and we have thirty-two, I'll go for thirty-two, because we always lose some. So now, we're gonna delay this, and then they'll all have different jobs.
They are hard to find, anybody that's got kids out there that are fifteen, sixteen years old. Boy, I tell you what, fifteen bucks an hour, and they work for the city away from, any city, I mean, I even put a, soccer rabbits goes through the same thing, so they all do, they all look for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, not, not fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old kids in the summertime, and they're, they're tough to find, no. So, I do have a motion and a second to table it till, uh, six-twenty-one. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Don't.
Aye, three to two, it fails. Because I agree, I don't know that they'll be here. I would say this, somebody want to make a motion to approve it, and then I'll make a comment when we do that.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Further discussion. I almost forgot what my comment was gonna be.
I was gonna point that you wanted to discuss.
You know, they, they may not be here, but I, I, I think what we should do is then, uh, Carla, you can tell Bill or ask Bill, ask Bill where, how many he has now, and where they are. So then we, we can have that, yeah. Yep, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Four to one. All right, regular agenda, plans and specs for twenty-twenty-one street improvements.
Yeah, John, I think will help me out by pulling up our plan set here, so, a- as councils aware, we, we've completed the, the design work, uh, for our twenty-twenty-one, uh, street improvements project. It includes four sections, and John, if you could maybe click a couple pages down to the aerials. Yeah, so stopping here, first section's First Street South, right behind Culvers, uh, mill and overlay project, the pavement's in pretty tough shape, so we're actually milling out four inches and.
Your mic on, John?
At the green light here, Vic, can you hear me? Is that better? Okay. So First Street South, I, the pavement's in fairly tough shape, so it's, it's more than just an edge mill and put some pavement on top of that, all those cracks that come right back through. So, uh, we've, we've designed it with full-depth mill and fill, so four inches of all-new bituminous out there. Uh, we did also walk through the site last fall with, uh, one of our inspectors and some public work staff. There's not specifically noted on here, but we'll have it marked in the field for just some miscellaneous concrete curb and gutter replacements, you know, some cracked curbs, things like that, so. You can kick, flip to the next page there, John. Very similar project on Frontage Road North, right by the movie theater, uh, exact same thing, kind of the same condition, where it's a full-depth mill and fill, four inches of new bituminous, uh, and a fair amount, this, this one has a fair amount more of the miscellaneous concrete repairs, curb and gutters, um, you know, kind of some aprons as it approaches, uh, uh, Thirteenth, et cetera. And then the next one, John, is, uh, this is, uh, I call it the Sixth Avenue Alley, I don't know that that's the exact right way to word that, but this is the alley that we vacated, so this project is simply to remove the pavement that is in the alley. Uh, on the east end, it just kind of puts a radius to that curb and gutter and some bituminous patching to close that end off, and then on the west side, it's, uh, basically leaving that apron in place to, to serve as the driveway access there, so. That's that project, and then the last one is our drainage problem on, uh, Third Avenue Northeast. You know, we had our neighborhood meeting, uh, maybe two weeks ago on this one, so, very similar to what we left with that night, where we're looking at a, frankly, a very flat ditch on the west side of that, um, but does give it positive drainage, uh, it, it will probably have some, some minor pawning at various points in time, just because it is so flat. But again, we'll regrade it so that it does have positive drainage going to the north. Um, we did flatten the ditch a little bit, so that we could make those culverts a little bit steeper, kind of thinking of potential freeze thaw issues in those culverts, and wanted to make sure that water wasn't sitting in those. Uh, in the last piece of this puzzle, I, I said on your, at your desk, this is the estimate, the left-hand column is, call it our, our CIP estimate that we had this past winter or spring. Uh, total project cost at that point in time, we were estimating to be one million, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Final design estimate is coming in a little bit lower right now at one million, one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars. Uh, you know, we got the one-point-two-million-dollar budget. Couple of caveats to that estimate is, is number one. We still gotta go through a bidding process, uh, and right now, you know, with the bidding environment, this is our, our, our best shot at an estimate, but we gotta get through that before we have really what we consider hard numbers. And then the other thing you'll notice, granted, if you south, I have the exact same seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget we had in the spring, and if you saw the email update I sent earlier, we are going through some significant subgrade issues and some rock blasting, so. I didn't account for that, just because the dust hasn't quite settled on exactly where that's gonna end up, but we will have some overages most likely on that project to maybe offset some of these, you know, slightly lower estimate, but. With that, I'd entertain any questions, uh, what I'm looking for tonight is a motion to approve the plans and authorize advertisement of bids, and we'd open bids, you know, first week or so of July.
Council, got any questions for John?
On Sixth Avenue Alley, is there any private right-of-way there?
That's what we're getting rid of.
We're gonna get rid of the private.
That, that's the problem, some of that alley went onto private property, and that's what we're getting rid of, we're getting rid of that mix of.
There's no public right-of-way there then either.
Well, there's.
After this project, we're, you know, kind of in conjunction with this as a separate process, we're vacating that right-of-way for the old alley. It is being retained as a utility, there is a utility easement being retained just for those overhead power lines, but the, the city alley right-of-way will, will no longer exist.
So there's nothing underground there?
No.
Don't have any sewer water there.
All right, somebody, any other questions for John? Somebody want to move to approve final specs and advertise for bids?
Move to approve the final specs and advertise for bids on projects.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, thanks, John. Uh, item B, consider police officer candidate.
I'll move to approve, or it is.
Maybe we don't need you. Go ahead, Mike.
I'll move to approve the position to, let me pull it up quick, um, Rebecca Olgerstrom. Uh, recommended starting pay at grade seven, step one.
I'll second with, I'll, well.
Further discussion?
Sure. Um, with passing all the other premium appointment screens.
Oh, yeah.
All right, further discussion.
All the screening and medical and all that.
Could we hear from Dave?
All, all of that has been done. Uh, the, all the background, uh, the psychological, medical, that's required, has been done, so she's, uh, she's qualified and ready to go, and is excited to get started with us, so.
Right.
All right. Any other questions, comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item C, vacate alley, Ultimate Sports Bar. Is that yours, John?
That is mine, uh, with assistance, I know, uh, engineering and public works has helped on this, usually, I, I can handle the public works side, or, excuse me, public hearing side of the vacations. Um, circling back around to this, I know it's, it's kind of cart behind the horse now, but, um, you may recall back when we did the variance for the, the ultimate rebuild, before they got started, there was discussion surrounding the, um, potential to vacate the north-south alley through there, and we, we got kind of a tacit approval, or at least a, okay to go ahead with that from the council at that time, even though it wasn't specifically under the umbrella of the variance. Uh, paperwork got started on that, um, unfortunately, it came through, um, and I kind of missed it in the fray of stuff, uh, in the fall, but, uh, coming back around to it now, it's actually somewhat beneficial, because now that the place has been up and operating for about a month, we've identified some ways that, uh, we can condition the, the vacation to, uh, help it function a little better, more the way it was intended. Uh, those have been outlined in your, uh, packet, that was identified through, uh, Public Works. The intent was that we would, um, set an easement through the ultimate property, um, I believe that was the case, is that correct, John? That we wouldn't retain title to it necessarily, but if there's a preference to go that route, we could probably accommodate that pretty easily. I would have to come back, but I think we were comfortable at staff level with retaining an easement through there, as opposed to having full title and making it a, a city alley, so to speak. Uh, the conditions we were looking at were, uh, provision of, of a painted, uh, east-west traffic lane to connect with, with the remaining north-south alley, uh, with multiple no parking markings, uh, to limit parking in that area and keep the lane open for neighboring traffic, particularly residences to the north. Uh, installation of a minimum of four no parking posts and signage on the northern side of that lane, uh, signage facing south. Property owner to be responsible for periodic maintenance and replacement of signage and marking, uh, as those conditions, and then is determined and notified by city. Uh, city requires plan for that work to be submitted to city for review approval of the public works director, prior to that work commencing, just to be sure it meets kind of, uh, essentially city specs. And then all of that work above completed to satisfaction of public works director. And I didn't have it in here, but, uh, if a motion could include, the intent was that we would like to have it done, uh, quickly, so it operates the way it's supposed to, I know parking is at a premium there, and we get people parking up and down the road. Uh, I think some of those issues are starting to iron themselves out, um, but we, we would like to have that, all that work done, um, by the owner. We set, recommended setting July fifteen, twenty-twenty-one, for that date to have that done and wrapped up. I don't think it's overly extensive, anything that can't get done in that time. Um, those would be our recommendations, and again, this is something I've kind of collaborated with, um, engineering and, uh, public works on, but I think we're comfortable with the, um, vacation of that going forward, but, um, how, putting those additional conditions in to make sure it's operating to the best of its ability. We've not heard any complaints related to the alley access at all, so that's, that's a good thing, but I know, kind of the way the parking lot is, it's easy, if it gets to max capacity, it's easy for cars to kind of start to encroach over that. There was a kind of a quick mock-up that, uh, Bill prepared that was included in your packet as well, you can see it's on the weight park letter, I just, thirty-second back of the envelope, because you get an idea kind of what they're looking at.
All right, this is a public hearing, it started at six forty-four, is there anyone here for that public hearing? Anybody that would like to speak at the public hearing? Anyone?
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing's closed at six forty-eight. Council, your wishes. Tom, do you have any problems with this? And getting it done in that month, that timeframe? It's just a couple of signs and some.
I didn't know exactly, John, what you just said, that's what it all included, but.
Uh, just.
I think we've worked really well together, and what we're doing.
Yeah, it ba, it basically comes down to just some striping, marking, marking those lanes with some no parking in there, and then a couple of signs and maintenance. Yep, I sent that to you, that, it was in that, that email I sent attached to that.
All right.
My question's for John. So, an easement is fine, rather than having the new alignment of that property titled back to the city? To clean that up?
Yeah, I mean, that's fairly standard to have, uh, an alley easement, similar that you'd have a transient utility easement, and for all practical purposes, we get the use we would need out of that.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, somebody want to move to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Oh, with all the other conditions.
And the note, note for completion by July fifteenth, because I, I don't know if that made it into the resolution or not.
Yeah, with additional conditions as established, yeah, okay, July fifteenth.
Yep, it is in the resolution, not the report.
And you'll get that to Tom, so.
Yep.
All right, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, item D, commercial, no parking zones.
I can, uh, try to keep it brief, there's a lot of attachments that go along with this, but what we're trying to, um, what primarily impacts is the fee schedule, as it relates to parking violations. And then exec, it, it designates, uh, four different roadways as commercial, uh, no parking zones. Um, the first part, as far as the, uh, changes to the fee schedule. Um, in, in looking at, uh, other cities in our area, um, we were, uh, previously at ten dollars for a parking violation. Saw them as high as fifty. Um, we, uh, most are twenty to twenty-five, so, we felt that as long as we are talking about changing the fee schedule for commercial vehicles, that perhaps we should consider raising it for, uh, automobiles or cars. Then, um, as far as the, uh, commercial vehicles, and, and what I'm thinking of when we're talking about this is the, the large box trucks, or the large, uh, semi-tractor trailer type units. Um, we have had, over the last several years, uh, we have had a significant problem with those types of vehicles being parked overnight on some of our public roadways. Uh, they've caused damage to the edge of the road. Um, I, I think maybe unfortunately, they're just, for a lot of these operators that might live in the apartments or whatever, um, and they lease trucks, they don't, uh, have a readily available place to park. So what they end up doing is park on our streets and then, uh, walk to their home or whatever. And, um, so, and it, but it's creating a, a bit of a nuisance. The, what we're proposing to is a, any violations of our parking ordinance that involves a, a box truck or a semi, and anywhere in the city is seventy-five dollars. That's quite a bit higher than a car, but what we have seen is the problem that these larger vehicles create as far as diminished, uh, visibility for vehicles trying to enter onto roadways and having their view blocked by trucks. It, it's a little bit more of, uh, hopefully, uh, a deterrent, I guess. A ten-dollar fine was not a deterrent when we were, for, particularly for some of the semis and trucks, that was just kind of the cost of doing business, I think, and they would absorb those, and, and, uh, it was just for convenience sake, if nothing else, so. Uh, and then, the roadways that we have designated, um, and we, we're talking about Third Street, South, uh, Park Meadows Drive, uh, Progress Road, and Prosper Drive are, are the roadways that seem to be, uh, abused the most. Uh, the reason the in-zone, or i, in the no-commercial zone parking fine is so high is that we have arrangement with All Care Towing to, if we have a semi that is in violation of our no, no parking ordinance, it's, uh, we would call All Care to come in and put a boot on the semi. Now, that seems kind of harsh, but why would we do that? The, the problem we have is a lot of these, um, trucks are part of a leased fleet. And unfortunately, the state's system, when we query a semi, does not, very infrequently, gives us the owner of that semi. Uh, typically, all we get is who is leasing the truck, uh, or the leasing company. They don't really care if a semi has a bunch of parking tickets on it, that's not really their concern. So it's very difficult for us to hold the driver of a semi rig accountable for their parking. Um, any given workday or work week, they could be driving a different semi. And, and so, uh, it's, it's, we're looking at, um, putting a boot on some of these vehicles that we find parked on, um, our, our public roadways in, in these designated no parking zones. The, uh, one, uh, concern, uh, and we might have to be a little creative with our signage, but I believe it's Progress Road is already, uh, signed for no parking. Um, if we put up signs that say no commercial vehicles, that might open the door for cars to park there, so I don't want to take that, that away. It's no parking loan, uh, no parking for all vehicles, trucks or cars. So we gotta figure out how we're gonna signage that, but, um, I, I think basically, again, just, just wanting to, protect our roadways, particularly in those, those four areas where we've had a lot of abuse, and, um, as well as just, um, address, of course, there's a, an escalating fee schedule that is in play. It's, it's spelled out in the, uh, schedule that was, was developed, and if payment is not received, um, ultimately, we refer them to revenue recapture, and we've been pretty successful at getting, uh, uh, parking tickets and things paid through that program, so. Um, I, I guess, you know, that's probably the overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
You know, when you look at this, you, you say cars, you say trucks, and then you say commercial vehicles.
Yep.
Okay, is there gonna be a designation if I have a half-ton or a three-quarter-ton truck?
Uh, no, not in my mind, I guess what I was thinking of, and I, I, uh, if it's a, i, if it's a, uh, a business van, not a box truck, I would consider that a, a, a twenty-five-dollar parking ticket, a, a large pickup truck, I, I kind of see, see that in that area.
Do we need to change the language?
Do we need to go gross vehicle weight?
That was my exact question when I read the fee schedules, how you designate that, that seventy-five-dollar fine for a truck, what?
Um, well, the, the prob, like I say, the problem has been the, the large, and I guess I didn't get into the weight, maybe I should have, but the problem is the large box trucks, not the vans, you know, the, the twelve-passenger van type stuff, I'm talking about the larger box trucks and the semi rigs. And if it's a matter of putting a weight on it, I guess we could do that, but.
That's kind of hard, because a lot of the trucks aren't marked with the gross vehicle weight. It's supposed to be, but they're not.
Yeah.
I don't know if there should be a better definition of the difference between trucks and commercial vehicles, commercial vehicles being a tractor-trailer combination, um, trucks being of.
Single axle, single, or solid rigid frame, whatever they call that. Solid frame trucks.
Well, and then there's P-vans, you know?
I don't.
Well, well, like a bread truck.
Yep.
Or a Freitalay truck, those are P-vans, what they're called, and they're basically, they're a commercial vehicle. But I think the weight would determine it.
Well, yeah, those, yeah.
But they'd have to be marked on the outside of the truck, so it could be determined, because I don't believe it comes back on the registration of that vehicle, the gross vehicle weight.
Should be on the door, though, inside the door.
Yeah, but you can't get in if it's locked and parked.
So we give, so we give them the ticket, and they come in and, and say, it's not a twelve-thousand-pound truck, it's a, it's eleven-thousand-four-hundred, show it to me, prove it to me, show me the door, or go get it weighed. You know, so, I mean, you can, put the burden on them, not on us.
I just think it has to be defined.
And I think the only way you can do that then is by weight.
Right.
I'm not sure what that weight is, I don't know how that fits in state codes or state licensing, I don't, I don't know, you know, I mean.
Paul's raising his hand, where's Paul?
Paul, what do you got?
Looks like he wants to talk.
Hi, you guys, can you hear me alright?
Yep. Yep.
Alright, great. So, right now, ordinance number sixty-one, you have a set of definitions that are tied to the Minnesota statutes. Ordinance sixty-one says that however words are defined in Minnesota statute one sixty-nine point oh one. That that is how you will use those words in your ordinance as well. In that statute, there are definitions for, uh, semi-trailers, road tractors, trailers, farm tractors, uh. Truck tractors. They have a couple of different terms that are there. We can institute our own definitions if we want to. Uh, they do not have a specific definition for a commercial vehicle. Uh, but what I would propose is I'll look through the definitions in the statute. And if there's, uh, an acceptable definition there that works for Chief Ben Trude, then the change that could be made to the ordinance is to just specify. Which of the defined terms we're gonna bring in. I think that if we go the route of, uh, trying to define by picking a weight. Uh, we might find ourselves with a headache if the statutes have already made some decision about how they wanna classify different vehicles. When we did this change to the ordinance or when it was discussed, uh, the question was really just, um, what do we need to do in order to. Put forward a prohibition on parking. But that question of what are we gonna define as a commercial vehicle, I guess that one was not posed, so. I will take that as a responsibility of mine. I should have, uh, gone and confirmed it. I took for granted that. There would be a commercial vehicle definition in the statute.
Okay, so should we just, I, how about we just leave this, uh, and, and let it go and bring it back next, in two weeks?
Totally fine.
How's that sound, Paul?
Yep, can do.
Okay. Alright, I think that's the easiest. Instead of trying to even pick the zones and stuff and everything, we'll just do the whole. We'll redo the whole thing.
I. My thought was too is that I think our minimum parking, um, violation or fee should be thirty, not twenty-five.
Wanna go to thirty, go ahead.
Yes, that's a general consensus.
Make a consensus to Paul and Paul can make it thirty books. Am I right?
Yes.
Does that include the.
Then we don't have.
Two to six AM parking then, or is that a different fine totally?
Are you talking about the winter parking?
Winter parking, yeah.
Yep.
So it'd be a thirty-dollar ticket for that?
Yep.
Yep.
Do we have to repost it for ten days?
Not at work. If we're not streaming anything in the ordinance. We probably should.
We have to, we have to post the fee schedule change for ten days.
Oh.
We won't table it. We just won't act on it.
Yeah.
We just won't act on it.
Paul, would we have to publish for ten days again or post for ten days?
So you post, you publish this without us approving it?
We have the ordinance. We have to post for ten days on our website before it can go to the council. Any changes?
Tell them to hurry up and get done with it and we can post it within ten days. Or the ten working days.
No, ten.
Business days, I think. Oh.
Paul, is that reasonable?
For you, of course.
Wow.
Alright, then we're not gonna do anything with it. We're just gonna ignore item D today and, and you do your thing and bring it, we'll bring it back on the twenty-first with no action tonight, yeah. Alright, thanks. Uh, let's see. Approve, approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
What was? Alright, bills are paid. Hey, Paul, I just got one thing for you. How we doing on my Miller draft?
Miller draft. I have my first draft of that for you. Uh, I'm pulling that together and cleaning it up, but, uh, we have something to start with to, to kick around.
Alright, and you, so you're gonna send that to me?
Yes.
Alright, thanks. Alright, anything else? John, you have anything?
No, sir.
John? Chief? Who else is here? Carla? Anybody? Alright, if not, we're adjourned at seven oh four.